My screen, anyway.
It's not on my screen.
Okay. Tonight's meeting is the quote "replacement" meeting for the February 2nd Planning Commission meeting. It is the same agenda, except I need to announce right at the very start that the Appeal 2937 of 240 Radnor Chester Road has been taken off the agenda. They have already gotten their relief from, or not relief, from the zoning hearing board. So that item, if anyone is here for 240 Radnor Chester Road, it will not be on tonight's agenda. And I like to do this when I conduct a meeting. How many folks are here to speak to the first appeal, or the first item, which is 227-229 Plant Avenue? Just raise your hand. And I guess that means everyone else is here who intends to comment is here because of Villanova. Would there anyone care to raise their hand if they're going to comment about the Villanova item? Okay. Just, I'd like to get a sense of it. All right. Okay. Actually, the first order of business, a long postponement, should have been at the January meeting, but that was canceled and could have been at the February meeting, earlier one, and that was weather canceled. I'd like to have a report from the nominating committee for the election for 2015 of Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Skip. The nominating committee met, and we would like to nominate Steve Cooper as the 2015 Chair of the Planning Commission. So I need a second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we also met and would like to nominate Skip Kunda as the Vice Chair for the Planning Commission for 2015. If I could have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
I think I have to vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, Steve couldn't be here tonight for this rescheduled meeting. I assume he'll be in place for March 2nd.
Yes, I think he will. Okay. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes of the last actual meeting that we've had, the December 1st, 2014 meeting? I'd like to have a motion, if there are no comments or changes, to, are there comments or changes?
No, I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. First item tonight is the 227-229 Plant Avenue sketch plan. Are the parties here, and Nick?
You may recall, you saw this plan before it went to the zoning hearing board. It's, I think you're familiar, anyone who's lived in Wayne is familiar with the property. Have a dilapidated old home that had four rental units in it. The applicant took it to the zoning hearing board, came here first, I believe got pretty positive response from the Planning Commission, took it to the zoning board, and the zoning board did approve the plan based mainly on existing non-conformities as to setbacks and things of that nature. So what you're seeing here this evening is a sketch plan, and after receiving your comments, and of course, the applicant will file a preliminary or a final plan, perhaps a preliminary, final plan, and ask for a waiver, so it would be a final plan as well. So I guess we're looking for your comments here this evening on this sketch plan.
I do have a couple of questions, Nick. So the, with regard to the parking, and maybe this is a question for staff, in some cases we've had to provide off-street parking for guests. What's the rule with regard to that? I know that 28103B says two parking spaces per dwelling unit, but, you know, I know with Adalburgers and Strafford, we had to provide guest parking. What's the difference there?
Guest parking is one per four units.
So do they need to provide that one additional parking spot?
Yes, I believe they would.
I'm sorry. Roger, is that zoning or land development? Saldo? I know it's not in zoning, I don't believe.
Yeah, I couldn't find it. That's why I'm asking about it, Nick.
I wasn't aware that there was a guest parking requirement.
Give me a minute so I can find it. Move on to something else.
We are providing two spaces.
Right. I mean, you know the provision I'm speaking of. They had it at Strafford and at Luella Court, and I didn't see it mentioned here, so I don't know.
It was townhomes, right.
Yeah, okay.
Did they have, did they have two per one at Strafford and Luella Court?
They have guest parking there, yeah. And plus two per one.
I mean, they had two per one for units.
Yep. The other question I had is, it's just really, well, it's two side questions. One is, was there mention of where the nearest fire hydrant is or is not? And did we have a, you're not going to have a count on this about approximately how many trees would be removed, or is it just the four or five that are listed here? There's about, I think there looks to be about four trees on the property that would be removed.
Right.
I'm sorry, I want to offer. The sketch plan currently shows that there's at least five trees that we're looking to remove.
Oh, five, right. Okay. And is there a tree, will there be a tree planting replacement plan?
There will be with a preliminary, final plan.
Okay, great. Pardon me?
Just one thing backing up, I never actually still looking on the off-street parking, or the on-site parking. Remember, this existing plan, the way it exists today, didn't really have any parking at all. And in this area of Wayne, I think many of you are aware, that there is much, a lot of on-street parking already, you know, on this area. And actually, some of the homes did not provide any on-street, or off-site, off-street parking.
The only, the only other comment that stuck out for me, and I just hope you guys can address it in preliminary or preliminary, final, is the issue of the driveway for Lot 4. The comment that, when I did the measurement, it looked like it might have been just at about 40 feet. Were you able to confirm that?
It is just under, it looks to be about 38, 38 and a half feet.
Okay.
From the edge of the drive to the edge of the curb.
Uh-huh. And do you?
I guess the question, is it measured from the edge of the curb, or is it measured from the middle of the street also?
Well, that's the question. Because this, the comment says the intersection, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think it says.
Right.
I can add to that, if I, to clarify my comment. If you project the right-of-way lines across what is Maple Avenue or Willow, if you project that straight across and measure along that side right-of-way line to the edge of the driveway, it does not meet the 40 feet. If you measure perpendicular to Maple Avenue, it's short of 40 feet. So it's close. I was asking for it to be dimensioned, to be cleared up.
Okay. We'll provide that during the preliminary plan.
Skip, those are the only questions I had. I actually would like to hear a public comment and then kind of weigh in. I mean, I'm really supportive of the plan. I know the building, and I know that it's a wreck, and anything there would be an improvement. But, you know, I'd want to hear what the neighbors have to say.
Unless anyone, unless anyone else has a comment?
You were required to provide two, two off-street parking places. One is the garage, and one is the driveway right outside the garage, correct?
What we did on the driveway, actually, was have the tire curbs. So it's grass, and you'll have the tire, you know, concrete tire with grass in between. I know there's a term for it, but, yeah.
They call them ribbon driveways usually.
Ribbons?
Yeah. Because you have two ribbons going up.
Right.
But that's from the 50s. What do I know? And the reason for the, for the grass in between is what? For the, to reduce the impervious coverage?
Reduce the impervious. And remember, too, what we have to do here is, we're going to have to do, not only are we reducing impervious, but we're going to do stormwater management as well, which there's no stormwater management on this site currently, which is, I know, very important to people over here.
Yeah, one of the comments said that you, I think you were at the conceptual stage, but they're looking for more, obviously, when you get to preliminary.
Looking for?
More, more of a plan, then.
Always looking for more.
Just so the Planning Commission knows, I mean, obviously, everybody knows, this is a stormwater hotspot. There's severe flooding on Willow, so we'll be very interested in seeing the calculations and what's done for stormwater.
Yeah. We're very familiar with the issues on Willow and the flooding. My partner lives there and tells me about it every day.
The, there's an existing gravel or asphalt stuff downhill from the existing structure, and that's part of the impervious that you're trying to, you're going to eliminate, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have any more comments from the applicant directly?
No, I don't think so.
Well, I'd like the idea of going to some public comment on this, and if we want to come back to it, then right after that, we will.
Hello. Hi, Sue. My name is Diane Engelbert. I live on North Aberdeen Avenue and have lived there longer than I'd like to admit at about 27 or 28 years. And I agree with Sue in saying that the place could only get better. We call it the witch's house, we call it the Halloween house, we call it anything that you can think of, because it is a horrible place. And we are looking forward to having it be improved, and so we're happy that you're doing that. As you know, I would have concerns about the parking. It's funny to hear your stories about parking here at our new building, but I couldn't quite tell on those drawings, because I haven't seen them close up, but you're saying that one of the parking spots is a garage that leads off of the driveway? That's what?
No, each, each unit has a garage spot. And then each unit has a garage.
So in here, and then in here's a, so it's one and one. Okay. All right. But you did make mention, oh, thanks, oh, thanks. You did make mention of the existing spot not having any parking, and that's possible. But I also have to say that for the last 27 years, I've never seen anybody park at that house. So whether they didn't have a car or where they parked at, I don't know, but they did not park on my street. And there were two residents, as far as I can tell, you say it was for four people, but I, it was hard to tell who was living in that house, other than twins who grew up there, and that was all that I ever saw. So my concern is for the guest parking, and also, since one is going to be in a garage, hopefully, they won't be using the garage for storage, and they will actually park in the garage. I'd like to make sure that they don't feel the need to park on North Aberdeen Avenue, because we're already well-parked up there. I don't have a driveway. I'd like to know what a driveway actually is. And it's very difficult to, to have to deal with that. And I hope that with the curbing, and I can't really tell where the curbing will, will be so much, it's hard for me to envision everything, anything, but, you know, Halloween things around that house. I'm hoping that maybe with curbing, you would be able to have some parking on their curb, rather than our curb. It's very tight. I know it's tight on Willow, it's tight on Plant. I can't imagine where with the curb you're even going to park. But I really hope that you will be able to plan somehow for some kind of guest parking for, for people who have, their visitors come, and will, I'm sure, feel the need to park on Aberdeen Avenue. So that's all I wanted to say about the parking and our concerns.
Thank you.
Do I get to keep this?
No.
No, okay. This is official, isn't it? Can I look at it? Okay. I'll sit down. Thank you.
Do we have additional public comment? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, Officer.
The, the police department is concerned with, with the parking. We, that neighborhood right now currently has issues with the off-street parking, to the point, we gave the residents some relief, because we now allow them to park into the Cowan parking lot for the park, and that's a permit lot to relieve some of the problems we're having there. Both sides of Willow, right where this, this proposed townhomes are going, it's no parking on both sides of that street. One side of Plant is no parking right there where that's going, and the other side is limited parking. So if they have a couple guests over, I don't know where they're going to be parking, there's just, there's not enough parking in that whole section there. And that's what the police is concerned about.
Is parking permitted on Cowan, is it Cowan Alley or Cowan Lane? You know where that is? That's that, that driveway that goes between Pennsylvania Avenue and Plant Avenue. It actually has a name, which I didn't find out until I lived here for 15 years.
I don't know if, if that's a right-of-way to the township. I know we don't maintain that at all.
All right. Thank you.
Has the applicant thought of how to address the parking issues that have been raised?
We're looking at it, you know, we've been just talking about a couple ideas, I don't know if we're going to get two or additional, but it's a possibility, we're looking at it, maybe we can get two additional, but.
Would you need a waiver of impervious or something else to do that?
Yeah, I don't know. That's what we're going to do.
Commission members, there's another issue with the parking. From what I heard tonight, they're going to have a, one in the garage and one in the driveway. And that's fine, because I understand that they got some relief from location of parking spaces, but it does not appear, from looking at the plans, that they have maybe 12 feet of space from the right-of-way line to the face of the buildings, and parking stalls are 19 feet. So a portion of the parking stall would be in the road and would not count towards the all-street parking requirement. So right now, they don't meet the all-street parking requirements for the two, and there's a Saldo provision that Roger will get into for what we were discussing earlier, but right now, we have some issues with the number of required, minimum required is two per dwelling unit.
I'm told, Eric just told me there's an overhang, so I don't know if that, we'll clarify that on the plans, on the preliminary plans. He said he thinks it's 22 feet, so, but we'll clarify.
From the right-of-way line in?
We've already, we've already got.
They got a variance to park in the right-of-way.
Correct. You'll have to get up to the mic. Parking's prohibited in the front yard altogether, and the relief would allow that, but you're not allowed to park any portion of that parking stall within the right-of-way. I don't believe the relief got into.
I think the relief allowed us to park in the right-of-way, I believe.
Or, there's either a comment that they have to seek a waiver for that, or they already got the relief at zoning.
We're going to have to address that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the relief that they got from zoning applies to this specific issue, but again, they're in sketch, so these will need to be worked out.
I think one of the points that they brought up on their sketch plan is that the right-of-way is artificially large in terms of how far it comes into the property relative to the actual cartway. That being said, it is still the right-of-way. Well, maybe you, before you come back before us, we're at the sketch plan stage, maybe a good meeting with staff on this might be something to look at.
Yeah, we'll see what we have here.
So you ready for comments? I mean, I am, think it's a good improvement to the neighborhood. You know, it's no surprise. It's a horrible building. And, you know, as long as you guys can address the stormwater management and your decreasing impervious, I don't, I don't know, maybe when you guys get into design, our, our comments may ask questions like, are you going to be providing curbing and sidewalks? Sidewalks would be, I could imagine sidewalks would be pretty tricky there. Well, maybe on Plant, not on Willow. You know, I don't know what you guys will be doing with regard to that. The only comment I have about the whole plan is that as you're looking at roof height and design, just try to keep the roof height really in, in concert with the rest of the neighborhood. The way we measure roof heights in the majority of the township, you can end up with a, a building that's a lot taller than people are expecting, and that can lead to upset. If you follow the guidelines for roof height in, that Garrett Hill uses, I think you'll find that the house will be more in scale with the rest of the neighborhood. And that's really my only comment about it. It's a good, you know, I think it's going to be a good thing if we can work out all the little details.
Additional comment?
Obviously, it's going to be a challenge to provide the stormwater management on this site. Do you have any ideas right now?
On the plan, we showed some conceptual subsurface storage behind the units and along the northern side of the end unit.
But just looking at the size of those and what's going to happen on this site, it, to me, that looks like it's going to be a challenge. And I don't know if you're considering maybe, at least put the idea, the idea out there that you can maybe do something a little different than a typical system. If you were to go ahead and put in sidewalks or something like that, you'd do something underneath them, or, you know, that type of thing. So I, I think working with the township engineer on, you know, getting some creative ideas before you even get rolling, because Gannon Fleming's revising our stormwater ordinance, they're very involved in this stormwater management here in the township. So it's going to be, I think you know it's going to be a challenge.
So we just had a side little conversation here. We have a question for staff. Since it's four units, does the open space requirement come into play on this development?
The park and recreation land?
Yeah.
I believe that's, yes.
Or fee in lieu of?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would.
All right. And the letter didn't mention it, so I just don't know if the applicant's aware that there will be, you know, this is not a property where they're going to be providing recreation space, so fee in lieu of, I would assume, right? Okay.
And, Commission members, we did look at the order for the zoning hearing board, and the relief that was granted for parking was with, sorry, was with respect to the front yard setback, not allowing parking in the right-of-way. So they, they will have to meet the dimensional requirements from the right-of-way in for the parking stall.
Yeah, I'd have to check, because that may be, that could possibly be a waiver issue, but I'll talk to Kevin about it, as opposed to another zoning issue.
And Nick, you just wrote up something about an overhang?
Yeah, right. There was, there was an overhang there. And I think what it, if you look at the, where the right-of-way is and how far in it is on this site here, you'll notice, and hopefully, as I said, I'll, we'll have to check, I'll have to check the Saldo to see if it's possible to have a waiver to park, because it's not in the cartway. It just happens to be in the right-of-way.
You know what? Actually, that reminded me. I was surprised to see how large the right-of-way and cartway requirements, only because I know the exist, how small those existing streets are, that to read how large the cartway and the right-of-way are for those two streets. And it's really only two streets. I don't know where the Maple Ave, maybe somebody can tell us how the Maple Ave name came into it, but it's really, it's Willow and Plant. We're not going to be using the name Maple, are we?
No, it's Willow and Plant.
Right. I was surprised, they seem really big, knowing how small the street is. I'm assuming you guys are going to be asking for that particular waiver.
Right, yeah. That's what we're thinking. As everyone knows, this is a older area of the township, and so the, the homes are closer, the streets are narrower, and.
Okay.
Well, because this is a sketch plan, basically, we're offering you our comments, and we've offered some of them. The public has made some comments, and staff certainly has addressed it. So we're not going to vote on this, per se, but clearly, parking is a concern of the police department as well. And that's something, I mean, the most, the thing that every developer hates to hear is that if you build three units instead of four, a lot of the problems would go away. But that, that being said, you know, this will be much better than what's there, however we get to the solution. So I don't have anything further to say. We appreciate you coming in and presenting this. And again, I think we all recognize that this development will be considerably better than the status quo.
Thank you for your comments.
Well, this is a sketch.
Sketch, yeah.
This isn't even a preliminary.
We'll be back.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Nick knows that's, that's a good response from me. I like the plan.
Yeah. I don't get that too much from you, Sue.
I know that.
So I have a couple of things. Yeah. Okay, just before we begin the next presentation, and this is from Villanova, this is a preliminary plan, setting forth their plan to construct the new buildings in the CICD. Everyone needs to know that this will, there will be a special meeting about Villanova on the 10th, before the Planning Commission. It will only be Villanova. I think it's, we're planning right now to make it the final plan. It seems a little rushed, but that's because we didn't have a February 2nd meeting, I guess.
And it's, it's tentatively on the March 2nd agenda. I didn't want to assume what this board would do, whether you tabled it until the special meeting, or you want it to hear again on Monday night. So that's your call, if you do not wish to have it on the agenda Monday night.
Well, I'm going to defer to the new chairman on that. I'll give him a call after this meeting, but, so we could theoretically have Villanova three times. I think that might be more than we need to.
And you do have BioMed Monday night.
So I'm, if, if it were up to me, and I guess at the moment it is, I would say I'd like to have Villanova off the Monday agenda.
What did you just say about final, though? About a final plan?
On the, the, yeah, the agenda for Monday technically says that it would be the final plan, which I also don't agree with. That's me personally.
That may have been the Butler Annex.
That's Butler Annex.
Which?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. We don't even have Delaware County comments yet. There's no way we could be doing final. Okay. Yeah, I think that, that was Butler Annex on that, on that agenda.
Okay. All right.
That should stay on the agenda.
There's so many agendas, I'm sorry, I may.
Yeah, yeah, no. So let's be clear, we want to keep Butler Annex on Monday's agenda, because that's really what it was.
Actually, the solicitor informed us that the Butler Annex does not have to be on the agenda, does not have to go to Planning Commission, so that one.
I believe the Planning Commission already voted to recommend preliminary slash final approval of that plan. It is up to the Planning Commission, but, you know, I see no reason why, if you've already done that, why you need to go back over it. There's, nothing's changed.
I do, I thought an issue came up at the Board of Commissioners with regard to a non-conformity in, a non-conformity about that plan. Something about that is ringing a bell for me, Peter, actually. Subsequent to our meeting and our approval, an issue with regard to the measurement of the, of extending the non-conformity with regard to a setback came up at the Board of Commissioners meeting, I believe.
It was either the setback or the overall size of the building?
It was, it was something about a setback, and I'm looking for people to nod and agree with me, but I'm pretty sure something came up.
That, that was a zoning question that came up that has been resolved.
Oh, it was resolved, okay.
How was it resolved?
How did it get resolved?
It was the setback, the front setback from Lancaster Avenue, and they are maintaining a portion of the existing Butler Annex wall, so they're preserving that non-conformity, and they're then building on top of that. So they have provided a sketch, which I don't believe ended up on the plans, but was part of the presentation to the Commissioners, that they're preserving the non-conformity, they're not eliminating it, thus they're entitled to that non-conforming location, and they're compliant with the code.
Is that why we have the, set the plans on Monday night, then? Perhaps does that reflect the change?
No. It was something that the Commissioners did not want to hear it as preliminary and final. They wanted, treated it as two separate submissions.
Okay.
But since this board had previously recommended preliminary and final approval, which is what the applicant was asking for, that was what I believe your recommendation was for, the Commissioners decided just to hear it as a preliminary.
So this Monday? So just by the way?
No, this Monday, Butler is not on here, because they've already obtained, or we've already recommended it, and the staff feels we do not have to look at it again, or the Commissioners feel we do not have to look at it again. We had a conversation before the meeting, I just want to clarify what we're doing.
Since you already recommended it, and since the plan hasn't changed, there's no reason to, or has not changed, there's no reason to go back over and rehash all of that. I mean, it's your decision, it's your agenda, but it's certainly be my recommendation that it's not necessary. And just because the board decided to split it into two meetings doesn't mean you now have to also.
Okay.
So there's no benefit to Villanova Order of Commission here by looking at it on Monday night? Is that correct?
Well, it's limited. I just looked at the agenda itself, and it does say Butler Annex. It's not the master plan for building in four phases, the six buildings, et cetera, in the CICD. That's still a separate meeting, that's still the March 10th meeting, as I understand it.
I, I think they're both, for Monday, both Villanova plants are on the agenda. We're, what the staff is recommending is that the Butler not be taken off, because what the staff is recommending is that the Butler not be taken off because it's, you've already reviewed it, and then they're asking whether or not you want to take off the other Villanova plan, since you have that March 10th meeting, and since Biomed is also on Monday's agenda.
That makes sense, but was there, there was also an issue, I thought, with storm order management at Butler, or is that getting addressed with staff?
I see, it's number four.
There was, there was no issue. They meet the ordinance. There, I have a very minor housekeeping comment that they need to address in their storm order report, but they meet the ordinance. One of the Commissioners had asked if Villanova would be willing to do additional above and beyond, which was the topic of discussion at the Commissioners' meeting for the caucus and for the vote on preliminary. Ultimately, that didn't gain traction of the board, the majority of the board, so it just went through the preliminary.
Yeah, and just to clarify, actually, Villanova was on twice on Monday's agenda in position one, which was Butler, and position four, which is preliminary plan continued. And then there's still, and I'm right on this, there's, right, there's still a March 10th meeting?
Correct. So on the current agenda posted for March 2nd, we show final plan, Villanova University Butler Annex as item one, that would be removed. Two is, item two is preliminary plan, Biomed 145 King of Prussia, that stays on. Three, final plan, 120 Bloomingdale by 115 Stratford LLC, that stays on. And then, number four, which is the Villanova University Housing Project, if it pleases this board, would just be addressed at the special meeting on March 10th, where that is the sole topic.
Well, again, I feel I should defer a little bit to the new chair, but
Well, I have a thought.
I think maybe that's a good idea.
Skip, how about if we get started on our presentation, see how far we get, maybe we come up with a, you know, we might need to kind of get into enough tonight to kind of see just how much of a scope we need to address, that we might end up walking out of here feeling like we need, you know, a little bit of time on the 2nd, maybe a focused discussion about something in particular, who knows, and then the 10th. So let's see how this part goes, for now.
Well, okay, I did do the straw poll at the start of the meeting, and no one is actually here to comment on Villanova, and maybe that's because they think it is on the March 2nd meeting. So I respect that, too. All right, let's, let's get started. And then we'll make a decision after that.
Just a procedural question, if we do not have it on the agenda, we can still receive public comment?
It's actually on the agenda.
No, at our next meeting.
It's on the agenda for our next meeting, right now.
I'm saying if it's removed.
Oh.
We can still, we have, we have an opportunity for the public to comment on anything they'd like.
There are folks here from the area around Villanova that may not be commenting, but you do have folks in the audience that are concerned with the project.
Yeah, and if they choose, if they choose to do so, they can comment on it, whether or not it's on the agenda at the next meeting, correct?
If the chair, which won't be me at that meeting, says so, I'm sure.
I mean, they can comment on it. It doesn't have to be an agenda item, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Like, we just saw comments.
I just want to make sure that people who are maybe watching from home know that they could, they're, they have the opportunity to do so, regardless of whether it's on the agenda.
When I first came on planning, we actually didn't even take public comment on sketch plans. So, I mean, you can, you can change the way things are done. So that means, yes, they could. Okay.
I guess the only, and again, it's fine with me, just for future reference, the applicant may not be there to address the comments, so.
But knowing that we have another meeting coming, if they want to make comments, they can put a comment on the record.
I mean, I don't think, with us, it's no issue. I'm just saying for future, you know, if the applicant's not there, and so.
Well, you know, if you, if the applicant could choose to withdraw from the agenda on Monday, too, I guess.
No, no, I was talking, I wasn't talking about Villanova. I was talking, as a general policy, do you really want to have public comment on an item that's not on the agenda?
I think her question was, could we, not necessarily should we?
I didn't know if we were allowed or not to have, like, if we're having a continued item that's not particularly on the agenda, whether or not we can accept comment. And I think we can, but tell me if I'm wrong.
I think we can. I think that in a given moment in time, and at a given meeting, if it's 11:15 and six people want to comment, maybe we say we're going to take that at a later time. And if it's 8:45 and we're done, and a few people want to speak, I think maybe we would do that. It's, it's, depends. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Since the last time we were in front of you, we've made significant changes to the plan. So our, our approach is just to point out the changes that we made, and then go from there. So first was regarding stormwater. We have met, or in some areas greatly exceeded the stormwater requirements. The stormwater management includes a rooftop cistern that will serve the cooling towers on the residence halls. That was also an effort to help overcome some really bad soils we have on the site. A number of rain gardens, bioswales, and tree wells. They're all shown in the drawings that you should have received. As requested by you and others, we are preserving all of Aldwyn Triangle as green space. We've added a number of trees in the Aldwyn Triangle to provide additional buffering for the neighbors on Aldwyn. We've investigated the right turn lane from Lancaster onto Eithen. We met with PennDOT, and as preferred by PennDOT, we are now showing a right turn lane in front of the Performing Arts Center that will allow traffic that's eastbound of Lancaster to come into the garage. This provides the additional advantage of if and when the garage is filled, it provides a recirculation route down this driveway and back over to main campus where we're building additional parking. We have relocated the driveway that used to be directly across from the church. So instead of being kind of on center line and under the proposed bridge, it's going to be further to the west. This, this brings a few advantages. It improves the sightlines for folks exiting and entering the drive. It improves the construction phasing, so we can be building the bridge and not interfering with that access to the new parking, which will be in place by then. It improves the safety of visitors in the, in the visitor's lot, so they can get to the bridge without crossing the traffic lanes. And it helps to reduce jaywalking, because we can then continue the fence on Eithen right up to the bridge here, so that students are encouraged slash forced to use the bridge instead of jaywalking. We also have added appropriate fencing along Lancaster, west of the church, as we discussed at great length in this area, again, to prohibit jaywalking. The handicap ramp that goes up to the bridge by the R-100 has been flipped to the east side, used to be on the west side, allows us to put some more buffering on the west side between the development and the neighbors. We've moved the cooling tower and the generator to the roof of the residence hall with an enclosure to reduce, to reduce noise transmission. We're going to contribute $175,000 to a traffic adaptive system for the traffic lights on Lancaster Avenue. We've added two levels of parking on the St. Augustine Center, whereas we had originally proposed one level on St. Augustine and one level on the Health Center parking. The reason for that is it gets us a few more spaces, which, which gives us some other added benefits. On the Lancaster Avenue parking, we can put a little less parking over here and preserve some of the green space and trees in that area, the existing trees in that area. And finally, on West Lancaster parking, we've reoriented the direction of the parking stalls that are parallel to the tracks, instead of perpendicular to the tracks, as requested by the neighbors. So those are the more major items. We've made a number of other changes. We do have a phasing plan, which was submitted with the package, that shows us building the St. Augustine decks, additional parking, and the West Lancaster surface parking as the first phase of the project. When those are finished, we'd work on the garage and the bridge at the same time as the second phase of the project. When those are finished, the residence halls as the third phase, and then the final phase would be the Performing Arts Center. So that's detailed in the, in the package as well.
I actually, I'm hoping we can ask some general questions now before we get into the details of the plan. This is a great overview, I really appreciate that you pointed out some of the changes. I thought I understood that in the restructuring of your garages, and by the way, the garage that you mentioned over near the Medical Center, is, is that the one that's on access from North Eithen Avenue?
It's accessed through, through our main gate, through here.
Is it the one we see if you go onto the bridge at North Eithen?
Yes.
Okay, and that, you call that, what do you call that?
Health service garage.
Pardon?
Health service garage.
Okay. I thought in the notes we read, it said that your, some of the changes you made actually resulted in a net 19 fewer parking spots, but you're saying that it results in more parking spots?
Just by removing the one level from the Health Services and putting two instead of one is a net increase. The overall project is parking neutral, so we're not gaining or losing.
That's fine. There was something else that I wanted to ask. Oh, the, the new configuration for the entrance into the parking garage?
Yes.
Am I to infer from that, that the four-way stop that you were envisioning on Eithen Avenue has been eliminated, so that?
No, it has not been eliminated. The entrance to the, to the parking structure has not been eliminated, but as, as an alternative, folks coming east on Lancaster can continue past Eithen, and then turn right and enter the garage there, with a turn lane being added on this part of Lancaster Avenue. It doesn't remove this other entrance, they'll both be there.
I think Amy had some comments on this, too.
Okay, right. So we'll talk about that when we talk about traffic.
Okay.
But the key is, you don't have to turn right onto South Eithen Avenue just to get to the parking garage. There's a big second order entrance. This entrance on Lancaster?
Yes, depending on the, on the situation, yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, one of Amy's comments, which maybe jumps the gun a little bit, is that it might eliminate the right turn lane onto Eithen from Lancaster?
Yes, we are not proposing a right turn on Lancaster, from Lancaster onto Eithen. We're proposing a right turn on Lancaster, from Lancaster into the garage drive here.
So a lot of people would probably perhaps cross Eithen before they try to get to the garage, rather than try to go down Eithen, is what you're proposing in some way?
Yes.
So you will promote that, because that's, that's an area where, when you're coming down Lancaster, you know how you have to slow down tremendously, because it's more than just a 90-degree turn, which really backs up the traffic behind you, especially with the speed that it comes through there.
And the, so I, I guess the one other kind of overriding question I have is, I am, I remain confused why it is that the title of this project keeps being called the construction of the, the student housing, when in fact, that's not slated to happen for, if I read the timeline correctly, two to three years?
Correct. So our initial submission was for the residence halls. We received a letter from the Township Solicitor requiring us to submit land development for the parking structure and the surface parking, not normally required to go through land development, but because of the CICD and the complexity of the project, he has to submit those. So within the week, we will, we will submit those as in addition to the package.
Which is really what we'll be focusing on initially, or, I guess this is more a question for staff. At this stage of the game?
It's, it's all one, it's all going to be one submission, and the reason that that was brought up to them
Okay.
to include those was because the residence halls can't move forward with all of the other support items that would be part of that. So we had asked them, or actually required them, to include that all in land development, so that the, the residence halls cannot stand alone. They need the parking, they need the garage, the bridge, they need all of the ancillary structures that would go along with that. So we require them to wrap that all in one package and not do it separately.
And so we will unbundle and look at the whole, all four phases now, even though in reality, the
Exactly.
structures and the ancillary stuff will happen first?
Exactly.
Okay. Which I actually agree, I mean, yes, I'm glad, really glad that, that is happening that way. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
That was general stuff.
Mr. Morrow, do you have, can you share the, the commission and the audience, do you have a better detail of what you plan to do with the lanes at the Performing Arts Center that goes into the garage? Do we have that level of detail yet?
I think staff, yeah, that's what I was thinking. No, that's what I was thinking.
It's, yeah. I mean, the whole stuff.
Yeah, but there's so many things not done yet.
Oh. You know, while we, are you guys pulling something up? Is that what we're reading for?
Yes, it's coming.
Oh, there we go, great.
So, so you can see the Performing Arts Center with the curved facade, the row of trees along Lancaster, and then partially hidden by the row of trees is a right turn lane, which allows access to the, the drive which goes to the parking garage. And that'll be a right-in, right-out only drive.
And so that's a single, that's a single lane, so during an event, there's a 75-foot taper, plus the, the turn lane itself, and that's a single lane that takes it down to the garage? Is that correct?
Um, or is that a double? Or can it be made a double? As far as, it's a five-lane section through Eithen and Lancaster here. And then once you get through the intersection, traveling eastbound, it's a 50-foot taper and 100-foot long lane to pull the right turns off, and then you would turn in this way. There's also a left turn in from westbound traffic, and you're allowed right out. So the only turn that's restricted out of the garage is no left turns out prohibited. What we discussed with PennDOT, which I think is maybe what you're saying, under police control during event traffic, there is an opportunity to shut this down as a two-lane road, and under police control, offer left turns to come in and use what would typically be the outbound lane as a second inbound lane. So bring eastbound traffic in, the traditional in lane, and bring westbound traffic in, the traditional out lane, and go into police control to get extra storage in this area to get more and more cars off 30 and stacked as they head into the garage.
So how many cars can we stack, Mr. Tweedy, between the right-hand turn lane, and I guess maybe it's for Mr. Tavani, and the, the single lane going towards the garage?
This was 225 plus 100. I can't remember. Do you remember the exact number? I think it was 10, 10 to 11 in the lane, single. If you doubled it, it'd be 22, and then you get five in the right turn lane itself. But the benefit of how far the garage has stepped back, it almost becomes an effect of 300-foot right turn lane, because you can use that length behind the Performing Arts Center, as opposed to turning right and being right at the garage. You get that extra travel lane for the 200, I believe it's 225 feet from the entrance to the beginning of the garage. So you get extra storage in there.
So just to add to that, one of the benefits of this design is especially during special events, if there's some sort of credentials check, or just general checking of people as they're entering the garage, the significantly long throat between Route 30 itself and the building allows added stacking area in addition to the full width section, which is 100 feet long on Route 30 itself. So just for the right turns coming in, there will be the 50-foot taper, 100 feet of full width storage, and then another approximately 250 feet, plus or minus, the number escapes me at the moment, from the point where there's the crosswalk essentially, all the way down to the building. Then additionally, during special events, if there is the added police control for left turns, or even for the right turns for that matter, you have the outbound lane that could be repurposed as an inbound lane, so you'd have another 250 feet of stacking. And depending how tightly closed vehicles are, you could generally say 20 or 25 feet per vehicle for a queuing space. A vehicle's about 17 to 18 feet long maximum typically, plus another two feet for spacing in between. So you could fit a significant amount of vehicles there during special events. Of course, this will be open to routine traffic as well, but during special events, there could be added benefits from the repurposing of the outbound lane, as we discussed.
So Mr. Tavani, my question is this, then. Taking away the police-controlled second lane for the left-hand turn, we have the ability to stack perhaps 16 cars to the taper. My concern is, on a big event, we just had a big game there the other night, Officer Mattis was at Providence and Villanova?
That's correct.
My concern is, will this actually stack back through the intersection of Eithen and Lancaster, causing even larger problems? Because I'm just looking at 15 cars, that's my question. Because the tapers, you can't count the taper for stacking, because if a car sits in the taper, he's in the, he's in the lane, he's blocking traffic.
So I think you started your comment by saying that's approximately 16 cars?
I thought, Mr...
I think that's correct. I just wanted to make sure you said 16 and not some other number. It's difficult to answer that question, because there's different types of special events. Some special events really concentrate arrivals over a very short period of time. Some events are longer because of like tailgating or other events that just have a more trickled approach of traffic. But I, I think, given the way traffic within the garage will flow much better than the existing surface parking lots do today, not to mention, there's the added ability, depending on exactly how the internal footprint of the, of the garage itself is laid out, to even stack additional vehicles internal to the garage itself, that it would be a pretty extraordinary condition for traffic to not only fill up the throat of the driveway, the full width section, and then spill back on the remaining distance back to cause a problem with Eithen. I think that would just be, it's certainly not impossible, but I think it's very unlikely.
I think, I, I take, I differ with your opinion in that, I, I agree with you and I concur, that how quickly cars can enter the garage, and the circulation of the garage itself is going to make a huge difference. If that is not a quick motion, you know, anybody knows, on a big night, on a big game night, that 16 cars and all the other cars coming down the pike that are going to try to get into that garage, I think it's very conceivable that that would cause it problems at the intersection.
Well, let's, let's just go a little further, because this was a very helpful conversation, I think, for everyone to consider. The garage has approximately 1,275, 1,280 spaces, say 1,300 spaces. Again, all along, we've been saying that some of these parking spaces will actually be occupied by residents of the Lancaster Avenue housing. And even during special events, presently, it's not contemplated to remove those vehicles from those spaces. So there could be 600 or 700 spaces that would be available in, the remaining spaces available in the garage to be used during special events. There's 5,160 spaces total on campus. You heard from Bob or Mr. Morrow that there's going to be, is parking neutrality for this project. The, the purpose of the project is not only to provide this new housing, but also to really address special events in a different way than they are today, and get vehicles to not only just go to main lot and Pike Lot like they do today, but take advantage of SAC and HSB, and even the Villanova Law School lot, and the new West Lancaster Avenue lot. So there's only going to be about 600 active spaces here, which coincidentally, happens to be the number of spaces at Pike Lot presently. coincidentally happens to be the number of spaces at Pike Lot presently. It's 577 spaces. So whatever activity in queuing occurs at Pike Lot, not at main lot, but at Pike Lot presently, is essentially what's going to continue to occur at the Pike Garage, but with the added right in, right out, left in access, which doesn't exist today, as we discussed, the added benefit of the eastbound D cell taper and left turn lane storage, and this really long, 250-foot long throat that doesn't exist today on Pike Lot. So again, I really think it's very unlikely that, especially in this single direction, there's going to be so much activity that it would spill back.
I wanted to get Amy's opinion on two things about this particular plan, Amy. I'm actually not thrilled about the westbound left-hand turn in unless it's controlled in some fashion. I, you know, do you not see a bunch of potential accidents as people are going westbound and trying to scoot in there? And then the other thought I have, given Mr. Norsini's concern about the stacking on Lancaster, is that would one of the recommendations, if we decide to keep this configuration, if this is the one we find is the most workable, is that part of controlling event parking will be to have an officer or somebody at the intersection of Lancaster and Eithen to prevent people from running and gridlocking the intersection, you know, no, no, not being in the box. And we may need, they may need to put staff at the intersection to prevent people from creating gridlock at the corner. But I'm curious what your thought about this westbound left-hand turn in?
All right, I'm going to make devil's advocate. If Pendot refuses to allow that right turn lane on Lancaster at Eithen that we had been looking for and discussing previously, there's a couple opportunities to make sure that we don't end up in the gridlock situation. Number one, if, if we don't get that right turn lane, I would prohibit all right turns from Lancaster Avenue onto Eithen during special events, period.
Right.
Okay. Number two, through signage, I would try to capture as many vehicles as possible that want to get into the garage and actually pull them through the parking lot and have them stack in there, because you have an opportunity to stack about a quarter mile.
Through the parking lot?
Through the parking lot. If you take them into Church Walk.
Oh, right.
And you continue it around the backside of the residential housing and bring it over to the access that lines up with the parking garage, and you place a police officer right there on Eithen, that gives you the opportunity to cross, scooch vehicles into the parking facility, get them out of the way of the motoring public on Lancaster Avenue, and allow them to get in as needed. So you could actually hold them back at that position where they're not going to create or inhibit any kind of movement for any of the residents that are trying to travel around the area. So those are two things that I would consider. You may also want to post an additional person to make sure that the vehicles do clear that intersection and there is no spillover on it. One of the problems, if you don't have a long enough stacking lane, what's going to happen is you're going to get vehicles in that curbed through lane coming on the Lancaster departure that want to get into that right ta, turn lane, and if it's, if it's clogged and they can't move into that turn lane, then you're going to get through vehicles, they're going to be stuck behind them beyond the intersection and continuing. And we see that today during normal special events right now on Lancaster and Eithen. So there are some other things that we can do to try to help the situation out if we're unsuccessful in getting that right turn lane.
And, and the westbound left turn, the westbound left turn in there?
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
It's, it's, the stacking is correct for what's going on at the intersection. I'm, you know, if it becomes a problem, then we could, we could do something to resolve it, but I would actually prefer to have peel off those vehicles before they get to the intersection and chew up some more of the green time that's going on at the intersection to try and make that left turn, and then make a left again to get into the parking structure.
Okay.
That, that westbound left turn, it seems to me like it should be before the island, rather than after.
But then they can't make it a right out.
Well, yeah, you're then opposing.
I mean, you'd have two, you'd have two, the width for two lanes there.
During special events, what Mr. Tavani was suggesting is that we take the westbound vehicles and have them come in at that right turn lane, right where he's showing the hand turning. And so you could actually have two ingress lanes at that point during a special event, and so they could funnel back into the parking garage. But he's got that as a correct position. You're going to want to go beyond it. It's, it's not designed exactly how it will be in the future.
Yeah, as long as that gets a little bit.
Yeah, we'll clean it up.
Because right now, the way it's shown, it doesn't look.
It's, yeah.
Like it's going to flow very well.
This is just a, just probably a, a sketch plan, it's not engineered to any.
Okay, that's what I was going to, that was going to be my question. How detailed and fixed in stone is what we're seeing here? And it's still at the development stage then?
Correct.
Amy, just one quick, just a comment. I really like, as a resident that lives behind South Campus, I really do like the idea of being able to keep people coming into that parking facility off of Lancaster as opposed to going through Eithen, because if you use Eithen as your main entrance, then Eithen becomes your stacking road. But if you can get them past that, then you have the opportunity to stack them in a, a right turn lane as opposed to using Eithen as your stacking, because that's what keeps us from coming home that way, is we have to get off and use Aldwin, which then Aldwin gets stacked up with residents, and we can only use it certain times of the day. So, you know, I feel like if you can keep them off of Eithen, then you start to allow the residents to at least make it in and out, and.
Well, are you, what we really need to clarify is when we're talking about, you know, a typical day, a typical, typical work, work day, or a special event, because if I hear those types of messages, you know, during a typical day, that's different than what I'm proposing right here, which would be to restrict those.
Well, you know what, the special event, yes, it's nice to have them go through. Rush hour, it's nice to have them go through. It's, it, you're during the day when there's very light traffic, you can get in and out of there pretty easily, that I've found. I really haven't had a problem. It's like 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock in the afternoon.
3:30.
Yeah, it's, it's that time where everybody's coming home from work, where I know that, I, I can see when I come down from 476, I can see the red lights backed up all the way past Church Walk.
Okay.
So I know at that point, I got to get off on Aldwin, but if it's between 4:30 and 6, I can't get off on Aldwin. So I usually then have to go back Conestoga and come around. So I go down Sprout Road, and that's where it gets messy. So it's the rush hour every day, and it's special events.
Okay, great, thank you.
One question, when you're coming south on Eithen, will you be allowed to make a left turn into the garage, or will that be restricted?
Well, one of the responses that Amy gave for special event planning, all of which I agree with, incidentally, is to restrict right turns eastbound onto southbound Eithen during special events, to force all the traffic to use the right in, right out, left in driveway. But as you can see, and as I just drug down a little bit here on the screen, we are, we do continue to believe that there's value in having the left turn movement accommodated during non-special event conditions, because for example, not all the traffic that would be making a left turn going into the garage is coming from the Blue Route, is coming from the west, turning right and heading south. Some frankly is coming from the north and heading south on Eithen. And since the existing phasing of Eithen and Lancaster shares that green time, to have the traffic actually be prohibited from making a left here would force southbound traffic to have to stop, make a left, and then make a right, which is not ideal either for northbound through traffic or southbound left-turning traffic. And we have looked at the queue projections, and we have a, a number of comments we still need to address, and we will, but the study that was submitted in December shows that this left turn lane is adequate to support non-special event traffic. And to Ms. Springer's concern about how, you know, during rush hour, sometimes the flow southbound on Eithen is, is stymied in general, keep in mind that, you know, it's just a two-lane cross-section today, and what we're providing is a, a, a small but still present left turn lane for southbound traffic, which will get traffic out of the way to the event, any of that traffic might be stopping southbound flow presently. And again, even though it's 1,300 or less spaces in the garage, only half of those spaces are actually going to be actively used, which coincidentally is exactly the same as what's there today. So it's not going to be this dramatically different picture there. And the fact that we're introducing all this additional surface parking to the west at West Lancaster also is going to change the dynamic a lot too, and, and bring things away from Eithen Avenue.
The other recommendation that Amy made with regard to, for special event, creating a situation where there's a right-hand turn at the.
Church Walk.
Church, well, it's going to be moving from Church Walk, but yes, I imagine we'll still call it that. And having people queue behind the, the residences, is that something that the university and that you support? Because I, I do remember an earlier comment, and perhaps it's just going to be in design that's going to have to be dealt with, there was actually some concern, I think from some neighbors, that in fact, that that parking lot, driveway, whatever, would become a thorough, a throughway, and some consideration to it as a design would need to be given if that turned out to be the case. And under the controlled situation of special event, I, I think it's a good idea. I think it, if anybody's going to be inconvenienced to let it be the people who are utilizing the event, and it's a nice long road, but I do have concerns of, is it really wide enough back there? Will be, you know, if we have a lot of, a true full line and, you know, there are, there are people in the parking spaces trying to get in and out, i- is it going to be designed to accommodate that particular use?
In my opinion is yes. Although there, there will be the possibility of actively turning over park, parking spaces in these, in these aisles behind the buildings during certain hours of the day. The, the simple fact is that they probably won't be turning over as frequently as you might think, especially during special events. So the ability for traffic to peel off Church Walk and use this as an effective queuing area, which would then be regulated by police control at the four-legged intersection, I think is really an ideal arrangement. It helps get traffic off of Lancaster earlier, it gets traffic out of the intersection of Lancaster and Eithen. And with proper regulations, the, the amount of activity that will be going along this parking aisle is actually probably going to be less than what you would find in a typical supermarket-anchored shopping center on a Saturday, like day in, day out with that kind of activity, with parking spaces really turning over and people driving. Here, you won't have that turnover, and the event is largely going to be directional, you know, people will be entering and then exiting. So I think it will be very easy to control and have the benefit to the community of getting the traffic off of 30.
What's the plan for controlling that? There had been discussion back and forth of that four-way intersection, what type of control did we land on?
At Eithen?
At, at the entrance of the, yes.
Yes.
We originally suggested an all-way stop control, but we are conceding to at least begin with side-street stop control, with the possibility that, you know, if, if there is some benefit that would be afforded by introducing additional stop signs, you know, I still believe as a traffic professional that there is a benefit in creating the gaps in traffic to allow all turning movements to flow more easily. And, but, you know, it's certainly not essential to the, to the plan, and Ms. Kaminski did point out that there are certain warrants that typically need to be triggered, and I'm not really sure if, I think it's 500 vehicles per hour over eight hours for the sum of all four approaches. And I'm not really sure that we would have that, but it's hard to project eight hours into the future as well.
The one final question about this one little area, and then skip, you know, go on to your thing. There had been a comment, you've moved the loading dock or the loading area from one of the residences to another, or one section of this area to another. Pardon?
Yeah, and that was just a general comment between, I think just, to address your earlier comment, the one thing Frank didn't mention, he discussed all event traffic with using this lane for queue storage and get people off the road, but you had concerns about comments on cut-through traffic for non-event time. There is a gate proposed at the bridge that would be closed at all times other than non-event, during non-event times. So this could not be a cut-through. It would be security or police-controlled, open during events to use those as a cut-through, but day-to-day, traditional traffic, it would be gated so that this rear lane does not become a driveway or a throughway. Just wanted to kind of close out that issue.
I appreciate that. And the loading dock area had been moved.
Yeah, Roger was just noting a difference between the conditional use plans that you guys reviewed prior to conditional use. There's a loading dock at the back of Building 1C that wasn't on the original plans you had. So he was just noting that with the retail space along this frontage, the original loading dock, there's the loading dock at the mechanical pit, but we added a small box truck loading dock here for support of the retail uses that are much further away from that retail pit. So he was just noting that, that an extra loading dock was added here during the conditional use hearings.
Was that problematic for you, Roger, or you were just noting it?
No, I was just noting it.
Okay.
And, and if I could, if I could follow up with one thing earlier when you're talking about the event, the planning and all that, item three from the conditional use order addresses that to where the applicant must submit and have approved an event plan that's approved by the police department and by engineering prior to any land development approval. We've been working with the applicant with that. This configuration recently just came about with some suggestions from Pendot, and I don't believe that they've had time to really work that into the event plan yet, but we've still been working through all that, which would incorporate a lot of the suggestions that were brought up here tonight.
Okay, great. I have a quick sidewalk question, how things are used. So you know how they have the sidewalk on Eithen Avenue so that they can cross over to the Aldwin Triangle, and you have to stop as a, as a motor vehicle has to stop to allow traffic to cross whenever there's students passing through there. Does that have to happen at all crosswalks? In other words, the one that's proposed by the entrance to the, the garage, thank you, does that have to be something that if a student enters there, that we must stop? Or, because you know how the traffic can be continual at certain times of day where you can't actually get through?
Right. If you have a, a crosswalk and it's painted, then you are required to stop for it. We were having discussions about doing the rapid rectangular flashing beacon, which would be pedestrian-activated when there were pedestrians present. So obviously they would stop there. But in general, if you have a crosswalk and it's signed appropriately and it's pavement marking, you're to yield to the pedestrians. However, in the PA code, it also discusses that the pedestrian should not step off the curb until they have assure, you know, they have some assurance that vehicles are far enough away that they can safely move from one curb to the other.
Right, and that's what's hard. It's kind of a, a little bit of a give and take, because if you are at that intersection, if you're at the crosswalks during peak times for the students to come and go from class, it's a head-down, earphones-on, continual walk and stream, and you can sit there and the traffic can build up. So I just didn't know how, if there's a way to address that today so that.
Let's put the RFB, and then we can get them across in platoons, and it'll be very clear to the motorists what they're supposed to do as they're coming through that intersection.
RFBs?
Rapid rectangular flashing beacon, so.
Like they have down on Lancaster Avenue in Ardmore?
I don't know.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't constantly flash like a lot of the pedestrian cross, right.
But they have to wait for it to flash, like, they can push the button.
Yes, there's a message, much like when you go to a signalized intersection where you push the button, wait for it to acknowledge, and then you still look both ways and then go across.
You know, another thing that strikes me is that on that particular crosswalk, is there any possibility of doing some kind of a bridge?
No.
No?
It's all great.
Yeah.
Just, one of the problems with having pedestrian bushes is if you don't make it convenient, easy, and it doesn't take extra steps for the pedestrian to use it, they're not going to use it.
Yeah.
So that's why having the beauty of that bridge that they're putting in is because it's all at grade and it moves exactly how the pedestrian would want to move.
Okay.
The right-hand turn lane, I'd rather not see that restricted, being that, then you'd have three options. You could turn off during special events, turn off early, turn off at the light, or turn off into the last entrance, so that if that entrance is backed up, you can instead take the right. And obviously, you're going to have to educate people, regular users are going to know how to negotiate into the garage, but if it's a one-time event, some people really won't take advantage of the first turn. So rather than restrict the right turn onto Eithen, I'd rather that still be available, just restricting the left into the garage there.
We do have plans for digital signage for people who are first timers or not familiar with the traffic patterns, part of our peak event plan.
Which, which is actually a requirement of the conditional use order, so.
Have you thought about something like they do at the airport with, you know, so many spaces left in the garage to kind of?
We do, we have that on one of our existing garages on campus. The SAC garage has that today, so yeah, we are considering that.
Or have a sign at, you know, at the intersection of Eithen and Lancaster, that garage full or something like that?
Right, to vector people up North on Spring Mill or, yes.
So that's the incentive to go to the other parking lot, is that this one's full? So that's what we'll take. It'll be filled first and then, because I can't see any other way to direct people up to the other parking lot.
Newcomers, we have a better chance, but people who know the area, they want to park close.
Did this, refresh my memory, does Pendot recommend that they, they not allow right turn off of Lancaster Avenue on the north, on the south Eithen? Is that what I heard?
Are you, no, Pendot's opinion right now is that they do not support the right-hand turn on eastbound Lancaster at Eithen. Just in general, a left turn lane, a dedicated right turn lane, I'm sorry.
They do not support.
They do not support it at this time.
Dedicated.
But that is not to say.
It doesn't mean they can't turn right.
Yeah, Pendot has offered no opinion on special event traffic. PennDOT has offered no opinion on special event traffics or restricting any movements during special event or normal traffic operations. And just a reminder that Eithon is under the jurisdiction of Radnor Township, so any movements on there would be up to the decision of Radnor Township.
Again, the, what do you call it? The, so you're going to, you're going to actually see, as you see right above the center, that you'd have the three, three lanes coming down, one of being a left turn lane, and the other two both go straight or one can turn right. But we're not talking about it, we're not, PennDOT was not in favor of adding an additional right-hand section there to turn right on it, is that correct?
They're concerned, they were more concerned with the daily pedestrian traffic and the additional delay that would be required at that intersection if you were widen it for that additional right turn lane, because you have that pedestrian scramble that occurs there, that all pedestrian phase. And so they, they felt that the number of special events during the year should not take precedence over the ability to get the pedestrians across the street in, as, on a daily basis.
That's a good call. I think so.
I, one last thought, all those lanes coming into the garage, turning off of Lancaster, we do, could you possibly do three lanes down here at the funnel or whatever you, what we've been calling it?
Three on the drive?
Yeah.
No, we can't fit three right now.
Because?
Because of the PAC and the slope of the field and the topography of the whole site. And getting into the garage, right? We don't have three drive lanes into the building.
Questions from commissioners?
Well, I, no, it's, it's a later design question. I just was, I'm, I'm wondering what the pedestrian flow is supposed to be from the garage to the PAC.
Because they'd be crossing the traffic.
Because they'd be crossing where traffic is.
Potentially.
As far as, from this corner is the elevator tower. These are the elevators and the main staircase for the garage. This face on the northern side is where the door is. So you basically come out of the garage and you come right into the large courtyard for the Performing Arts Center and come right to the corner. Remember that this is a service drive and not a full movement driveway. It's gated.
Well, that was going to be my question is, what is that?
There, there's a gate right here, really. This is here for a few reasons. Most importantly, we talked about if the garage is full and you're queued here, it gives a relief point. You could open up the gate and bring traffic back out, circulate them north and then on the campus for extra parking. Or fire, it's basically a fire lane between the buildings. And the mechanical equipment, there's an electric closet here and the mechanical entrance is here. So it's just an area to access mechanical equipment. So it's really just a service drive.
Okay, good. That's, that was kind of my question about that.
Thank you.
So there's no public access through that entire...
Yeah, we're not permitted for this to be a, a full movement driveway. It would only be opened for deliveries or police control as part of an event planned to give a relief.
I meant to modify that by saying there's no pedestrian access.
Along the drive.
Along the drive, on that side of the Performing Arts Center.
Ped, as far as pedestrians walking along this side?
Walking into the theater, walking, yeah, leaving the garage, walking across that lane into the theater. Are there doors in the back of the theater, so to speak?
There's just one emergency exit here, but it's really more for them to come out and get to the loading dock for dumpsters. It's not, the, the doors to the, public doors are up here.
Okay. Do we...
That, that does bring up a bit of a point, is that within that parking garage, you know, pedestrians are going to want to walk the shortest distance. So if they're parked on the, on the lower side, looking at now, how do you encourage them to walk all the way through around and across rather than just heading right across?
So if they were to jaywalk across Lancaster, it's fenced. So Lancaster is fenced over here, right? So they, they have no choice but to cross at the intersection. So they'll learn that this is the only way to go.
So that'll be continuously fenced past the, past the driveway?
It's already fenced, yes. It's already fenced from the corner all the way down the stadium.
Okay, great.
That's there today.
We sort of focused on one topic, so there's two parts I'd like to do with that. One is, at this moment, I'd ask if there's any public comments addressing traffic, access to the garage, et cetera, just on that narrow topic. This is not to say you won't have an opportunity to comment about other parts.
We're going to try to segment us.
Okay. Yeah. Rick Liardi, Aldwin Lane. All of this is new. I mean, I haven't seen this stuff, so I don't know. But three topics real quick for you guys to think about. Okay, so St. Augustine Center Garage is going to get not just one level, but two levels. Why not three or four? The original, the original final recommendations from Ventura Scott Brown Associates generated '07, '08, recommended that St. Augustine Center be flattened, be raised, and be redone correctly as an actual garage, the way you anticipate seeing it. As St. Augustine Center today does not have the internal ramping that you would expect to see in a garage. If they're going to go two levels on top of the two they have now, they're going to have to have internal ramping anyway. So as long as you're going to be reconfiguring that garage and doing it properly, the same way the, say, the law school garage is, why not do four, five levels? Why not make that your central storage? Why not make that, it's got access from 320, it's got access from North Eithon, it's got two accesses from 320 as a matter of fact. You could have a total clockwise circulation off 320, down North Eithon and out again that way. Make that your central storage for parking. Second comment, the decelerate lane here coming into the, coming into the Pike Garage off of Lancaster. I'm not convinced that there's enough time for somebody to, having been held at the red light at Eithon and Lancaster, to accelerate through the intersection, put on a turn signal and not get rear-ended, getting into the, getting into the deceleration lane, even under ordinary circumstances, let alone special event circumstances. You have not talked, as a third topic, you've not talked at all about truck turns. I don't see trucks getting around that corner at Eithon and Lancaster and into the loading pit without rolling over the curbs. Or alternatively, without impinging on lanes either side, blocking the intersection.
Have you looked at the truck issue at all since that came up just now?
We submitted a truck turning plan. Amy had some comments and we're revising and addressing it in our response to, with the revised plans.
Okay. I can ensure the planning commission also that we will review this for the design standards that are required by code, as will PennDOT, and they will all conform to the required design standards.
I'd like to suggest that maybe we ask Steve Gabriel to come up and hit his high points, which we don't want to restrict the traffic, that you had a number of comments, particularly because we have this special conditional use here, and it just seemed like the next thing I'd like to go to.
Glad to, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we were, for this land development plan, we were given a very specific, narrow assignment of looking at zoning regulations related to the buffering, streetscape, and noise, as well as then run through the conditional use order and kind of give a status report on how, how compliance with that is, is progressing and then the comprehensive plan consistency. So with that, with that assignment, first we looked at zoning. The two particular aspects of zoning that, or aspects of the plan related to the buffer planting strip, there's a lot of discussion during the conditional use hearings. This plan does show from plan view, a lot of landscaping along the perimeters. The zoning ordinance does require an immediate visual screen that can't be seen through. So what our comment talked about was having, having the plans then add in some profile views, elevation views, that would show exactly what it would look like, the landscaping, planting buffer strip would look like.
Yeah, I just want to jump in with one comment. The applicant that was taken off the agenda had a number of ground-level views and, in terms of screening the Radnor Road, Radnor Way.
252, 252 Radnor.
So I'd like to see something like that, too.
Yeah, I think it just, it just demonstrates then compliance with this particular, you know, part of the, of the ordinance, that, that that's going to be achieved at, at the time of planting, that immediate visual screen. So that, that would, you know, that would be, something you could check off the list. So that would apply both along the R-100 line, that portion of the project, as well as along, for those properties along Barley, Barley Cone Lane, would be, would be applicable on this plan. The other, the other, some other comments dealt with buffering along the lines of noise or lighting. Full cutoff shielding is required for, for sight lighting. So, and it appears that perhaps some of the lighting may not meet those standards, just, again, additional information to, to show that compliance for, for that. Susan?
I have a question about the lighting that we envision coming out of the, both the Performing Arts Center and, but more importantly, the garage. Will you be looking at what they're planning to do there so that, you know, from a distance, this parking garage doesn't become this big, you know, constant nightlight?
Yeah.
I don't know if you've been able to see that within the plans or if you'll be looking at that specifically.
I think with, with a little bit more detail along those lines, that, you know, that would be part of demonstrating the compliance with, with the shielding that's required by the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't seen, and pardon me if, if it's coming, you know, we haven't seen elevation, you know, design elevation. And, and that is a concern, you know, that's something I'm going to be really looking at is the south-facing and the east-facing walls of both the performing arts, well, particularly the garage and the Performing Arts Center, as they will impact the, you know, the, the neighbors. And things that can be done to minimize that lighting and that light pollution. Okay?
Yep, yep, yep. So the other buffering standards do deal with noise and sound attenuation devices. There's a trash compactor that's reasonably close to the R-100 line and therefore the homes on the other side, so we raise that. And then there's some streetscape standards in the purpose section of the CICD that would be part of this. Then we, we did take a look at the conditional use order conditions and, you know, Roger has mentioned a couple already tonight. There are 17 items in that conditional use order in various states of compliance. And what we've tried to do in our comment letter is to provide kind of a status summary on each item and what kind of information is needed in order to determine compliance with each of those. I think Roger mentioned the event circulation plan, still need to be putting together with some of the, you know, new additions to the design, an emergency evacuation plan for the students within the housing itself, and then also a traffic plan for, I think, essentially the commuters and the part-time students, how they'll be directed to the existing parking as each phase is being constructed and, and some parking is being removed and new parking is being added, how they'll be directed to those new places, as well as how they'll move from those new parking areas across Lancaster Avenue and where it's going to, where are they going to be crossing and encouraged to cross. A couple other items that we, that we want to, just want to notice, note from the conditional use order, appropriate fencing be provided on both the north and south sides of Lancaster Avenue, and I think the plan shows that. It also shows some safety fencing along the R-100 rail line and safety fencing and a screen wall along Eithon Avenue. What we, what we thought would also be important for the plan to show is, again, elevation views, some details of that, what that fence will actually look like when you're, you're looking at it from a close range perhaps, so that the township can determine whether it's appropriate fencing for that particular application. As the applicant mentioned earlier this evening, nearly every, nearly all of the Aldwin Triangle is being proposed for, for preservation, dedication, which I know is, is a welcome item. The conditional use order also talked about parishioners of the church, of the chapel, being able to park near the chapel on the campus. So some information related to, to that would be, would be needed. And then also, again, with noise levels, one of the conditions talked about ensuring that no amplified music or excessive noise emanates from any of the south-facing dorms and that the township and the applicant are to determine a permissible sound level. So still some work to be done, but I think all things that Villanova has certainly had in their minds and will certainly take into consideration and, and address as we go on through the process.
Steve, a couple of quick questions. On page three of your letter, the, number nine, the access control fence, I'm not exactly sure what an access control fence is, but it says along the south side of Lancaster Avenue is proposed to be in the existing right-of-way. Is that compliant, not compliant with our, our, our ordinances?
Well, it, it doesn't seem that, you know, especially, especially now with...
Where is it, I mean? Where is this fence that you're speaking?
It's, it'll be in, it'll be in front of the dorms where the retail spaces are also located on the ground floor.
Okay, so just the fence.
We just noticed that the fence, the way in the plane that we were reviewing, it showed it with, within the right-of-way, and it seemed like this is a good time to get that out of the right-of-way.
Well, it affects, it was, there's a portion where we're widening for the turn lanes and it connects back in.
We can't see that.
Andy, if we could switch to...
Will we switch to the above we said?
In the area where we were widening for the turn lanes and it connects back into the existing width of the roadway for the four-lane section, the fence line, just the line work, shows it go over the existing right-of-way a little bit, so we just have to pull, the access control fencing is the, the existing fence that's there to keep people from jaywalking. We just have to pull it back off the road a little bit in the center portion.
Okay.
Is there going to be, is there going to be a fence the entire distance from the corner down to there?
Yeah, you're going to start, there's the crosswalks here, so that'll be open for the crosswalks, but then just west of that will start fence, and it'll come all the way across and tie into the abutment of the bridge. And there'll be some man doors for fire access so that fire trucks can park on the street and open up the gates and get their hoses in, but other than that, it'll be, day-to-day, it'll be completely closed.
Now, is there, there's also a fence on the north side there, is there not?
There's current, yeah, there's an existing fence that's preserved on the north.
Which brings me to my other question, which was comment number 15 on page five. You said the plan needs to show that there is an at-grade pedestrian access all the way to the church. I'm not sure what, I know there's been discussion that the, the parishioners don't want their ability to walk to the chapel to be restricted.
And yeah, the, the conditional, the condition of the order says, "The applicant shall maintain a pedestrian crosswalk from the proposed project site to the existing church at the, at the present church walk location if approved by PennDOT." And then if you turn back to condition number six, there's also reference within that condition regarding, "A gate shall be provided for vehicular and pedestrian access during church events if approved by the Board of Commissioners during the land development approval process." That's within that access control fencing on the north side with the intent of providing or enabling that continued at-grade pedestrian access all the way up to the church.
So instead of an emergency type gate, it's a parishioner gate?
Yeah, I think it's still, it's still with, it's still a controlled access point, but for church events, the, the conditions are indicating that that would be available for parishioners to use.
So is the applicant going to be able to do this? Or how are you planning to do this?
It seems like we're getting conflicting guidance, but we'll do whatever the commissioners ask us to do. So yeah, we're planning a, where there's the existing drive, to have a gate there that will be opened and closed as appropriate.
So it's the, it's the gated driveway that you're planning to use as the pedestrian access?
Yes.
And vehicular, too.
And vehicular, weddings and funerals.
How are you going to have it be both pedestrian and vehicular? Are you putting a sidewalk in next to the driveway?
Uh...
Is there a sidewalk next to the driveway?
There's a sidewalk along Lancaster.
No, no, no. This is talking about all the way up to the church. If you're planning to use the driveway...
The driveway is wide enough to have, as park, as central drive and parking on both sides, we could make half of that pedestrian, but that's...
Well, if you, if you turn part of the parking into pedestrian walkway, then you lose parking spaces, so it'll have to account for that.
Right. Folks, right. Folks don't usually park there except for weddings and funerals.
Yeah, exactly. Having some familiarity with it, that driveway for vehicular traffic is only used for funerals and weddings. They enter for church purposes up Spring Mill Road and they go right into the entrance up Spring Mill Road, and that takes them back to the parking area in front of the church.
All right. Well, we might hear from the public on that one, because I do know that some members of the... that some members of the public had expressed this particular concern, so I want to make sure I understand that. The, the final question I, I have is that, when I read the application that the, that was submitted, and I didn't bring it with me, it was the big, big fat stack, there were a number of questions that asked, do all, does the plan conform to all zoning and does the plan conform to all ordinances? Are they asking for any variances or any waivers? And in both cases, in both spots, it was the opportunity to write, to say, "Yes, we comply," or, "No, we don't, and here are the waivers we're asking for." And on both questions, you guys put NA. Why is it not applicable?
My understanding is we don't need, I don't know, I have to defer to Alex.
If anybody is-
If there's no waivers being requested and we comply with all zoning, I don't know if there's anything-
Well, that's why I don't understand, why it didn't just say no then. Why would, why would the answer to those two questions be not applicable? They're incredibly applicable.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't fill out the application, but I, I assume it was just waivers are not applicable. I think the only comment from Amy's review that, that we're still reviewing is, she was asking about the radius of, of this inside curve, that depending on the turning movements, we might be able to get the turning movements to be sufficient without the full, the full radius that the ordinance prescribed. So the only waiver I envision that might be added is, depending on how the turning movements come in here, because of the offset intersection, the large radius would really increase the pedestrian crossing length there again, so there might be some request for some flexibility on that radius while still maintaining sufficient turning movements. But otherwise, it's fully compliant with zoning, and we believe we can comply with, with the majority of the comments from all the consultants for the review letters.
Okay, because I saw a number of waivers or a number of instances in Roger's letter. Roger, you picked up on a number of things, actually, and so did Amy, there's an entrance that's supposed to be 22, 25 feet wide and it's only 22?
These are all items that are typical during any land development review that we do.
Okay.
And the way that my response is worded in the letter, which I think you're referencing, is the applicant needs to address the comment or request a waiver from the comment.
So they're saying they're going to address it?
And they're saying that they are going to address it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I just had a question about the fencing. Rather than having fence on both sides, does it make sense to maybe only fence one side and, and have a, have a landscaped barrier on one side, since if you, if you, if you completely fence off one side of the road, there's no reason to cross it, and then instead, just so that you avoid, you know, just the look that you, you know?
Oh, it's fenced now, right?
Right, but, but I mean, this is an opportunity here, if it's continuous fence like that, that you can maybe one of the, one of the barriers could be a green. And I'm a little concerned too, because say there was an emergency and students want to exit that area, I'd rather it, you know, be a, a fence that you could somehow have the ability to have some openings for an emergency or something like that.
Just thinking out loud, my, one of my concerns would be safety.
Why, why?
Yeah, one of my concerns would be safety. I, I just don't know, I have to defer to the engineers and everybody, because you would have dorms there, you don't want the kids running across the street and then, you know, coming down from main campus, you don't want the kids crossing either there, so.
Right, I, I guess my thought is just if there was a way to have a controlled, some gates that maybe only security can open or something, just so that if you did need to somehow, I don't know, I just-
I, I think about 10 minutes ago, someone said there were emergency gates for fire personnel.
We met with the fire marshal this morning, and, and for fire protection, we are, I believe we agreed on, I think, three gate locations that are going to be six to eight feet wide at the, kind of the midpoints into each courtyard, both to let fire personnel in.
Perfect.
And then they could be used-
Perfect, yeah, I just, it's just such a long distance, that, that makes perfect sense.
Well, you know, maybe I'm just being typical engineer. It seems, it seems to me that having fences on both sides doesn't make, make a whole lot of sense, and as important, at least to me, having fences, it almost makes it look as though like people, kids are in prison behind that, you know? It would be, but, it would seem to be, it would be much more inviting, much more-
If I could address that quickly, that was, that was a very strong point during the conditional use, that the students from the housing and the, the people that would be using the parking garage be channeled to the pedestrian bridge. And, and the way to channel them to the pedestrian bridge is have that restrictive fencing on Lancaster so that they can't just cross and get to the other side and cut through, cut across Lancaster. They're intentionally funneled to the pedestrian bridge for access over to the other side of campus, which was, and a lot of the testimony was, was, and the concerns of the residents was very strong that, that that take place, so you, so you reduce the number of students at Eithon crossing and channel them over the, the pedestrian bridge.
And about five meetings ago, I brought up the comment that a couple of students had been, at least one student, but certainly maybe more, had been killed crossing Lancaster, and that's why the speed limit was reduced to the current speed limit as well.
Yeah.
I don't think that's actually correct. We, the speed limit was changed in the last two years, we haven't had any fatalities in 20-plus years.
No, 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 I meant further back.
Further back? Speed limit was changed to 25 in the last year, year and a half?
It's more than that. It's more than that, but we're in favor of, of the fencing on both sides, just to prohibit, we don't have pedestrian strikes because of the fencing on both sides of that roadway.
All right, greater minds than-
It's really helped.
Dave, I, I would think we, did we interrupt you, Stephen?
No, not at all.
Okay.
I was, I was wrapped up, and I can, I can tell you that we've been asked to continue to monitor particularly the conditional use order conditions to make sure that there's compliance with each one of those. They're not, it's obviously not in an ordinance book, but those are, you know, those were things that were handed down by the board at the end of the year, so we'll, you know, we'll continue to report to you on those, on the status of those items.
So the addition to the parking garage in the, in the other location, does that impact any neighbors or is that all, that's internal to the campus? Is there any, any, is that going to impact anyone's views or?
It's internal to the campus. Directly across the street is law school and nursing and the steam plant and the facilities office, so.
And, but, but I mean, it's not such that it's at a higher elevation that's going to really create-
No.
It's a problem, it's, oh, it's the lower one, okay.
Yeah.
So that's a perfect opportunity to take advantage of an interior place.
Right, and, and the basis of the ramps that are being added is so we can stay within the zoning height requirements of, of the garage and be compliant.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
We've heard somewhat from Amy, and we've certainly just heard from Stephen, and I'd like to invite Roger or anyone else on staff to bring up some salient points, bigger issues that you'd like to see addressed differently or even more detailed than we have so far. And I guess I'll punt to Roger first.
Well, you all have a copy of my letter, I think that's pretty detailed and where we're at at this point. They've, they've addressed stormwater, we're, we're still working with some additional ideas of stormwater. Right now, they have pretty much met the code, which was a very low bar, if you remember, because of coming back from the, from the all-paved areas. They've actually exceeded it in, in several locations, and we're still working through where we have some other ideas. We're working with them to try to improve other areas of, of stormwater. Other than that, I don't know that I have anything really major to discuss. They've indicated to me that they can address most of the items that are in my letter, and there's still, like I said, a couple of outstanding items we're working through.
I have a couple of questions about the dedication of Aldwin Triangle and then the park and rec aspect. Is the dedication of Aldwin Triangle, the total ground involved enough to cover both requirements, both for the additional building coverage in the CICD and the park and rec? Or are you anticipating, or is staff anticipating a fee in lieu in part, as well as the Aldwin dedication?
I may defer to Peter on the first question, but I, I believe that the Aldwin Triangle, the portion that's being dedicated is going to remain open space and does not constitute a park and rec area. That's, that's purely open space, dedicated to remain open. There's, there's a small portion of that, and I think if, if Mr. Tweedy could take you through that, if you want to get into the details, that's remaining open in case SEPTA requires some ADA compliance on their, their bridge and station area, but other than that, I believe the entire site is being dedicated for open space.
Yeah, and, and I believe, and I think we still have to work out the details of the agreement, but my understanding is it's all going to be preserved by a deed restriction or some similar form, with just an exception written into that deed restriction that should SEPTA ever need to, if you remember, we're building the ramp on the north side for ADA access, but the south side is staircase only, so there's no ramp there. So our only concern is flexibility that if any ramping needed to be added on the south side, that, that any preservation document includes some kind of provision or exclusion that, that is an improvement that is allowed, limited to just ramp improvements for the crossing.
And, and to the second part of your question, we've provided in our letter both the area that would be required to be dedicated for the parking rec ordinance or the fee in lieu of, and that's the option of the applicant, but nowhere on the plans has it been shown that they have dedicated additional area just for park and recs, so my assumption would be that they would consider paying the, the fee in lieu of.
Does the applicant want to in some way address that, or is it still under discussion? So we shouldn't, it isn't automatically going to be a fee then, at this point?
Not until the applicant decides which way they're going to progress.
Roger, the one comment on page two, number six, I don't, I don't know where I read this, so I don't think it was in anything that I read of yours, but I thought that one question that has come up recently is whether or not the church and the monastery had been included in, in the calculations of impervious coverage that Villanova has submitted. Did we get clarification that all of the buildings, including the church and the monastery, have been included in the overall calculations for the campus?
That's, it's the first that anyone posed that question to me, I would have to research that. I could defer to Mr. Tweedy to maybe run through.
I, I know that I read that somewhere, I don't know where I read it.
I don't know either, and it's the first I'm hearing of, but I'd have to research that.
Okay, so because I know I read it, I, I do want to make sure that we have verification from the university that all of the buildings, including the church and monastery, have been included because they're on the grounds.
I will have that discussion with them.
Great, thanks.
Additional comments from my compatriots?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, and about the parking size, I'm sorry. Number, comment number 13, no, it wasn't 13, it was, it had to do with the size of the parking spaces, I believe. Did I read that in your comments? Was there an issue of the size of parking stalls, parking spaces, Roger? Am I not remembering that correctly?
That was in Amy's letter, and-
Oh, Amy's letter, okay.
We believe that's inaccurate because the CICD had the provision to allow, the nine and a half is the base code, but the CICD permits the nine by 19, so-
Okay.
We don't agree with that comment.
All right, oh, it was Amy's letter, okay, thank you.
Yeah, five, Roman numeral five, number two.
Does the applicant have information about the inclusion of the church and the monastery in the impervious?
I, I can't imagine that it puts us over, but they hung up, Alex hasn't.
I mean, we'll check on it. What we did, we took the last recorded plan, previous development from this that was approved by the township, and then did the delta changes from this project, so whatever was previously approved is, was the basis for this, so we'll check with the designer of that original plan just to confirm, but this is the first I've ever heard that comment, so we'll have to double-check it.
You know, I, we can retake, yeah, if you want to say something, go ahead.
Do you want to hear Amy's comments?
Well, maybe one thing, while we pause to consider our next option, are there public comments at this point, again, on a different issue, or are these issues, I should say?
I hear, I'm confused now. The church and the monastery, and I believe the grounds around the church and the monastery are owned by the Augustinians, not by Villanova. So my, my concern is, when I hear church drive, I'm not sure, is that a part of Villanova University because it, and, and also church walk, I would think, I'm not sure, is owned by the Augustinians. So when I hear about a fence going up, which is now going to block access, force people to go across the street at South Eithon, walk up the sidewalk or whatever, have to go up the bridge, making it inaccessible for like regular residents of the township or people getting off from the bus. You know, I understand, and I respect that, there may be an issue of safety for students, but right now, the students cross at the light, I've done it, going up, going up church walk, it's timed, and it's been very safe, so I know you want the kids to use the bridge, but remember, there's more than just students involved in this area.
Well, let's ask the applicant real quick one question, do the Augustinians own church walk or does Villanova?
Just, just the monastery is separately deeded to the Augustanian order, everything else is Villanova.
Including the church?
So the church is Villanova? Okay, so only the monastery, and only the monastery building?
Small parcel around it.
Okay, that answers one question.
That, that's not what I understand, because I asked about it a long time ago. It's the monastery and the church that belong to the Augustinians. They've owned that going back maybe two centuries, two centuries?
Close.
Yeah.
Well, we just, we just asked the applicant, so we're kind of in a quandary here between-
Well, I think that the fact should be checked here.
You can go to the courthouse and get it up.
That's not the answer I was looking for, thank you.
All, all of the deeds of the title reports were submitted along with the land development application, they're on file here. A portion are in your packet, I, I didn't include all 200 and some pages of that, so.
I had a minor question. I noticed that Villanova is contributing $175,000 to traffic control measures for multiple intersections. What's the actual cost of the whole system? Does anyone have a sense of that?
We are actually, we are going to apply for a Greenlight Go grant from PennDOT, and Villanova's $175,000 portion along with Provco's $100,000, we hope, wish to use as a grant, as our match for the grant. So from, this was worked up by Gilmore, to go from, to put the traffic adaptive system in from Radnor Chester to Lowry's was like $522,000.
Just for Lowry's Lane?
From Radnor Chester-
Oh, wow.
Through the Blue Route interchange, all the way to Lowry's Lane was about $522,000. Plus your money.
A good thing, I think.
Good luck with that grant.
Amy, we've talked to you in part, would you have other comments, other highlights of your analysis that you'd like to share with us and the public?
No, I just went through the review letter. A lot of the things I think can easily be resolved with the applicant. I think the greatest issue is that right turn lane on Lancaster and Eithon, so we're still continuing to pursue that. I'm not sure how successful it will be, but we're working on it.
And just to revisit, the four-way stop thing on Eithon, you think that that's not going to be likely or warranted?
No, I, I don't think it's a good idea. I would prefer to keep it as typically where you just have a through movement on the road. Those are two driveways coming into that intersection.
The, the comment you had about relocating the church walk traffic signal, did the applicant seem to be making it west, lining it up with the new entrance that they're proposing?
That's what the plans look like.
That they're putting the light there?
Correct.
They're moving the light?
Correct.
Okay, good.
The only thing that I would recommend is continuing the fencing- The, the only thing that I would, uh, recommend is continuing the fencing beyond the pedestrian overpass to, uh, further prohibit pedestrian movements near Church Walk. I'd like them to, uh, continue the fencing along to really force those pedestrians on either side of the road to go to the traffic signal to cross the road there.
I guess the, the thing I'm trying to envision about that, and I'll, I'll drive by tomorrow while I do every day, but, um, the, the walk, you, you cross the street at Church Walk and then they go up the stairs to go into the church as it's currently configured. So do you envision this fence being up elevated? There's a wall, right? It's elevated, don't, yeah, that's what I thought. Or are you envisioning this, this fence being down at the sidewalk, in the sidewalk?
I'm, I'm actually envisioning it, I think it's proposed across the frontage on the housing side. Am I correct in that? I'm not, okay.
I, I thought that you were proposing fencing on both sides.
There is fencing on the other side already.
And you're going to keep that? I think they're going to keep that.
Right, right, and I believe that there was going to be additional, go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, Alex.
Yeah, there's, there's fencing on the north side today from Eithen to basically the church driveway.
Sure.
Then there's the stone walls, there's bollards and existing yellow kind of swing gate that you can just walk around. The bollards and the swing gate are going to remove, be removed, and we're going to do, per the conditional use order, we're going to put in a swing gate that's going to be fully blocked except for non-event times when we have to open it for the church, which it would be open, which is in conformance with the conditional use order. Then we will, there's an existing shrub row that goes to the existing Church Walk and then continues from Church Walk down to basically campus corner today. Um, that staircase and everything at Church Walk is all going to be taken out when the bridge gets built. It's just going to be basically the abutment of the bridge after the fact. So we're going to extend a fence from where the existing driveway was an existing shrub row, that'll become a fence. It'll basically go from the church driveway to the abutment of the new bridge. And then the existing shrub row going down, we're still reviewing, but most likely, that shrub row can be preserved, and then either a fence would be added, or if the township believes the shrub row is sufficient enough and a fence isn't needed, yeah, we're at the mercy of the conditional use order, so whatever the board decides is sufficient pedestrian, um, blockage for getting, you know, promoting jaywalking is, we'll do whatever we need to do.
And, and the idea at that point is, the idea of the fencing on the north side, and I, you know, yes, I know I was a part of this, and I know that, I know clearly why we have fencing on the south side of Lancaster, but in removing the steps to Church Walk and
Hey.
In removing the steps and just having the bridge overpass, what is the value of the fence on the north side to the west of the church? I thought there was a wall there.
We have, we have to preserve, well, the wall's going away, but we have to preserve a crosswalk for bus tra, or for people from the bus getting to the SEPTA station and PennDOT wants still one crosswalk. So the board's concern was that if students can come to this crosswalk, go across this crosswalk and still go up steps here, they're not going to use the bridge. So they wanted no way to get onto campus from south of 30 unless you were on the bridge, or went all the way to Eithen and use that crosswalk.
Okay, well, now I do understand Ms. Bailey's concern a lot better. Thank you.
Am I understanding this
Good better or otherwise, I understand it better, thank you.
Correctly, that that's, the SEPTA bus stop will be at the driveway?
Um, we're talking with SEPTA. Now with the relocation of, of the intersection, we're talking with SEPTA whether or not they want to move the location of the bus stop.
And Susan, just, I don't know if you ever walked up those stairs to the church. They're very steep and very long. It is a very steep climb up to the church. And now what you're going to be doing is obviously you're going to get to the pedestrian crosswalk and then come out at grade level.
Are you going to be able to pass underneath the pedestrian bridge on, on the one side? How is that going to work?
Um, from sidewalk? Yeah.
So is there, there's an underpass on both sides?
The bridge, the bridge will span both the 56-foot wide cartway, which is the five lanes, plus the sidewalks on either edge, so.
So, so inside the fence you can cross, under the bridge, on both sides?
Well, on the south side, remember, we're removing the sidewalk from the curb line, so it's going to be road, fence, and then this big pedestrian plaza. So you're inside the fence on the south side.
Okay.
On the north side, it'll be curb, the existing sidewalk that's there today, and then the fence behind it.
So the fence is on the other side of the sidewalk?
On the north side, it's between the sidewalk and campus.
That explains a lot. Okay, thank you.
The, the sidewalks need to be maintained on either side. It's a PennDOT requirement so that you can walk, if you, if you were on the north side of Lancaster, you can still walk all the way up through Eithen on both sides. You just cannot access the campus other than those two designated spots.
That explains why you need the continuous fence. Thank you.
I'd like to break for one second to say, uh, welcome to, from my standpoint, because I haven't seen him here in a while, to Kevin Kachansky, who's back with us after
Back safely.
Back safely as well.
Thank you.
But of course, now that he's back, I'd like to briefly put him to work as well. Uh, I'd like to, I know you've, um, are thoughtful person, and I'm sure you have a few comments and opinions that you'd perhaps like to air about where we are on this project at this moment, I hope.
Absolutely. Um, I know one thing that was alluded to earlier, that, um, there was a meeting today held with the emergency services, fire marshal, um, to go over the emergency evacuation plan for the buildings. There's going to be a lot of coordination between the requirements of those individuals with Roger and with Amy to make sure that, you know, what things that we're needing to gain access to the buildings and from that end, still fly within the, you know, parameters of the conditional use, um, as well as the engineering when we start looking at fence cuts, access points, um, to make sure that we can get in and out of the buildings with emergency vehicles and things like that. So that is kind of an ongoing dialogue. It's a little early for that, um, but that is something that is, um, that we have started today and will continue to go through, um, through the entire land development process. So that is something that did want to make you aware of.
Thank you. Well, I'm at the point in the meeting here where I'm trying to decide what our responsibility is and what our next step is. It seems to me that staff in part contemplated that this would be a process, that there are things that, um, the applicant's still working on that we can't even examine because they're not ready. Um, the thing you just discussed, emergency, um, access and evacuation, et cetera, Roger's letter had at least 15 items that need to be done in some minor or major way. So since it seems, unless everyone on the commission feels differently, that we are going to have at least another meeting at the preliminary level, I'd like to give the public one more opportunity to comment, and then anyone up here to comment, and I, I see you nodding, yes.
And then we'll table.
Pardon?
And then we'll table.
And then I think we should consider tabling it. But first, um, I'd like to invite anyone, one more comment or two from the public, and people who've already spoken can speak again. Is that, what action were we supposed to take this evening on this? Well, I, I'm kind of asking that sort of out loud, I guess. Maybe Peter can.
Well, I, I think the staff anticipated you tabling it at tonight's meeting since it's scheduled for Monday and scheduled for the 10th.
Right. And actually, on the second, it says preliminary continued.
Right. So, so, yeah.
We're going to re, not exactly repeat, but we're going to revisit this on Monday. Is that correct? Or we might.
We didn't want to, I didn't want to pull it off the agenda because I didn't want to make an assumption for the planning commission, that this meeting may have carried in the Monday, but we know we have the special meeting for Villanova solely, so based on what, um, Skip has said, since there are items that have to be worked out, it may not be the most fruitful meeting on Monday, especially since we have Biomed coming in, and to give the applicant time to work through some of those things, and then when we meet on the 10th, there's more to discuss because there'll be some finality to what they've been working on.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking, is that now the result of tonight's meetings, I guess in my mind, the result of tonight's meeting is that we will table, but perhaps give the applicant a, you know, a, a focused list of some things that, you know, that you've, the staff's given them the list of things they're looking at. Perhaps we'll talk about some things that we might be looking to see and have our discussion on the 10th be focused. I can't imagine that they could turn around and, and have things ready Monday night. I mean, that's, so let's give everybody an opportunity to do their work, and those of us up here can continue to digest, you know, the information we have, as well as the rest of the commission who hasn't had a chance to digest it.
And could not attend this meeting, too.
Right.
And then on the 10th, um, our objective at that meeting will be the final review of the preliminary or further?
Depends on what they plan.
Depends. Okay. I mean, if, if, if there's 10 loose ends, I don't see how we could get to a final, a vote on a final.
But anyway, so.
Well, if they're all addressed, or they're willing to be addressed, or they, you know, we've approved things that aren't complete before, as long as the applicant and staff agree to meet staff's requirements. Thank you, I just wanted to be clear. But I did invite the public, and I thought I saw someone getting ready to come up, so I don't want to cut off any, no, okay.
Well, so one of the things that I'm noticing is not here tonight is comments from the Delaware Valley, I mean, the Delaware County Planning Commission, and I'm wondering what the status of the county planning commission weighing in on this plan is. Because I, I know for myself, as long, we've spent what, two years on this, between the approval process for CICD and now this process, um, you know, we really need, I know, I really need the outside set of eyes of the Delaware County to, to look at this and tell us what they think, and, you know, we've all been so entrenched in it for so long. So what's the status of their review? When will we get that letter?
We, we don't have the comments back from Delaware County Planning Commission.
Have they met?
I don't believe they've met on this.
They've met.
But, did, was this pulled, Mr. Canilia? Would, or did they go on this?
Bob, Bob was there, one.
I, I don't, that's what I'm asking.
They had a hearing, or they had the, the meeting, and I assume we were getting comments, but I guess for some reason they haven't come out yet.
And just to clarify for the board, we're still in preliminary.
Right.
So it's not final, so however, whatever length of time it takes you, it's for preliminary recommendation, yea or nay. But we will, we will forward the Delaware County Planning Commission comments as soon as we receive them.
Just like tonight, of course, we just got the, at least, unless it was emailed to me and I missed it, but we just got the comprehensive plan update from Villanova as well.
The long range.
The long range plan, so that's something that none of us could have looked at while we were having this discussion, I don't think. But we will be.
The other, the other thing that I'm, I don't know what your, the applicant's intention is, and I know that it's not really necessarily required, but given the scope of the plan, you know, seeing some renderings and elevations of what you're intending this to look like, um, you know, I appreciate that in the conditional use process, that wasn't something that made sense for you to do, but, you know, CICD passed, you were given your conditions, you know, you've clearly spent a lot of time and money, uh, on the project, and I think everyone in the community, well, I'll speak for myself, but I do believe people in the community would, would like some unveiling of what you think this thing is going to look like rendering wise. Um, it, it's probably time for us to have an understanding of that. This is going to drastically change Lancaster Avenue. I, I know you sincerely believe it's going to be an improvement. I appreciate that position, um, but, but I do think people would like to see, have a sense of that, and whether you have them already or it's something people can pull together, um, you know.
You know, to amplify that comment, one of the things I liked about the application that was withdrawn is that it had a, a series of before and after photos, too, to the extent that that makes sense. Like, there's, everyone is concerned about access to the church, so maybe there should be some.
Yeah, I was thinking that exact location, where will now be a bridge and it's currently the sidewalk, how that's going to look in the future, and I know that we're making major changes there, and I'd hate to see it look so different that people are displeased with the look in front of the church, so incorporating landscaping and those types of things on that side. Um, you know, to kind of, you know, mimic what's there now to the degree possible, as well as just aesthetic.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. I think they've done a very good job on most of the issues that have been raised over time. I think the traffic flow, now it seems rational. Um, it's, it's, especially during events, they seem to have done the things that, that addressed the kinds of things we wanted to do. The landscaping, from what I can see, is going to, is going to look pretty nice. Preserving Albin Triangle preserves open land, that's a very help, beneficial thing to the community. Um, they, they have, you know, without the added right turn lane on the south side of Lancaster Avenue onto Eithen, that gives us another eight, six or eight feet or whatever that width is between the buildings and, and the, uh, the cartway, and that's a good thing, that creates more of the open space kind of stuff that we're looking for. They seem to, to, although it's spreading it, the parking area is over a greater area of the campus, that's fine. They, they, they're doing the stuff that they, that we've asked them to do. I can speak from the Shady Tree Commission a few weeks ago that they're even going to plant nice trees and stuff, or, I, this is much, to me, it's a much better plan and arrangement than, than they had before. And, you know, I understand it's a work in progress, but you're making lots of progress, and it's a good thing. Um, I also like the fact that you're moving the, uh, cooling tower and the generator up to the top of the building. My only comment on that is, um, if you're going to exercise the generator and if it's really noisy, you ought to pick a nice time of day to do that, not three o'clock in the morning. Um, so, but I think overall, you've made tremendous progress, and I, it's something that I ultimately would easily be able to support. It's just, I'm looking forward to the final thing here.
You know, well, I had one final thought. I, um, I'll put one last plea in, that if staff and the police and the township find merit in, we had a resident suggest that in fact you put more of the parking over at the SAG, build, you know, the, uh, St. Augustine, and, you know, I, I presume you've made your reasons of why you've decided that this little street called Eithen needs to have 1,200 parking spaces, and why that big old spot in the middle of your campus can't have it, but, um, you know, I, I would ask you to continue to consider, uh, the resident's suggestion because for a lot of reasons that, that suggestion has merit. And I, I understand you want parking spaces next to the Performing Arts Center. Um, I do, but I also read that in your plan, the Performing Arts Center is only getting built if you have donors, and it would be very sad to me if someday we don't get the Performing Arts Center there, and we're just stuck with a big old parking garage, and then probably a parking lot right next to it, um, i- if, if things don't go the way that you would like them to go. And I sincerely hope they do, for your sake and for the community's sake, um, but if it makes more sense to put more parking over at SAG, and if the police would support that, I don't know if they have an opinion on it, and if our staff has an opinion on that, um, that's certainly a conversation I hope that you all will have.
I see Officer Mathis nodding.
The, the on-campus parking, how, how many spots are going with, with the addition? How many spots will that now occupy? Just, just roughly.
It's right here, um, 271 to 494.
It's around the 270, and it would go up to just shy of 500.
Okay. Um, and what are the plans for as far as exiting those from that parking garage? It, it would be ideal if, if you could exit them all onto 320, get them away from the main intersection at Villanova. Is, is that what the plan is? Okay. All right, and then there would be an officer there to get them out? All right, and the only, only issue at, at 320 there is the, the lighting is poor there at nighttime?
A lot of residents.
You're going to have an officer standing in the middle of the road getting those cars out there? It's, it's kind of dark there?
Near the law school.
Might think about just a light there? Because I know you use that a lot now during the day, and then out there, and there's a guard there, correct? But, there's no? That's just a, uh, there's, there's a gate though, correct? All right, there's a gate there. Because that, that will help the situation from the main intersection if, if that 500 cars could be left out on the 320. That's a big help.
One other thought about the St. Augustine lot, uh, if it was slightly bigger and the pike or the garage lot here is a little bit smaller, you might be able to fit those three lanes in instead of the two that we're restricted to right now.
Move, we table?
I just wanted to add one more thing. Um, I know this isn't a requirement, and you are talking about your responsibilities as far as the park and rec portion. With all the new residents in this location, I'd love to see some kind of jogging trail or something like that somehow incorporated into this project, whether it's at this stage or later, just because putting all those people there, they, they are going to have that need. They just, you know, everybody wants to go out for a jog or whatever. If you can find a way to work that into your campus, I think that would be beneficial for everybody.
I'd like to second that, because I live behind there, and it's pretty unsafe sometimes because they run at night. because they run at night, and they don't wear reflectors, and early in the morning, and you can't see them. And the students are running on Meadowwood, Browning, Aldwin, Ithan, and you can't see them. And it's dangerous, and it's an accident waiting to happen, especially with 1,300 more students.
Okay, last chance for comments from anyone.
As long as we're on the topic, one of the, one of the suggestions during the conditional use phase was, in fact, a bike lane down Ithan. If, if the township and Villanova could get together and see a way to make Ithan, Ithan is already wide enough in some portions, but find a way to make Ithan wide enough to accommodate a bike lane, that would be wonderful.
But could we potentially connect the sidewalk from where it finishes at Villanova Campus, right there at South Ithan, at the first resident? Could we connect that to the new sidewalk that's been put in at Agnes Irwin School? I know that there's people's properties there, but, because there's a lot of students from Agnes Irwin that take the train in, and then come down to the campus, Agnes Irwin's campus? That's a whole new can of worms, isn't it?
Yeah, that is. I mean, to continue that, that road widening and sidewalk, it's a lot of frontage of a lot of folks' properties, so I...
Have to take it from them, or, I mean, is there a way to make this work? I'd have to look at the right-of-way of Ithan, though, but...
I mean, whether it's in the right-of-way, or it would be an easement or taking, however that would work. Still, there's a lot of trees, there's a lot of people's front yards that would be disturbed. I think that's a, that would be a capital project that would involve the board of commissioners and how that all goes. Great for our trails and sidewalks plan, but I think it's something to look at, and maybe if it's not in fruition with this project, it would be part of something else.
I'm going to make a motion that we table. We need a second.
Looking for...
Sarah Pillen, Garrett Avenue. I just had this thought, if you enlarged the St. Augustine, then a lot of the cars for the students living in the dorms could be warehoused there, and it would be a walk for them to get there, so they'd be less apt to take the car out of the garage to go to downtown Bryn Mawr, or to go to Wayne, or wherever they're going. Would make them just a little bit further away, so they might just leave the cars there, which would relieve the traffic. Thank you.
That's used successfully on other campuses. It's a little inconvenient to get to your car.
All right, now a motion to table.
I second before something else happens.
Do we vote?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. You have to run the rest of the meeting, Mr....
Item, the administration is trying to standardize our meeting times with a start of 6:30, and I know our new chair isn't here, but if you could think of that for discussion at the next meeting on Monday night...
I think we had an email exchange on this, but, okay.
Yeah, I've been asked to ask you officially for...
Okay. You know, technically, we haven't adjourned, but I guess there's no additional public comment, no...
Motion to adjourn?
Let's have a motion to adjourn.
You just adjourned.
Okay.
We're adjourned.
Adjourned.